Call order, Mayflower County Commission meeting for June 25, Mayflower Arkansas. Starred with Whitlock.
Randy Omen.
Here.
Rusty Waters. Chad Patterson.
Here.
Kent Brown.
Here.
Thank you. For approval minutes for last month, we get a motion to suspend the rules of reconvenable data and accept them as written.
Accept them as written.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very thank you. First on the agenda for tonight is our site plan for the Centourage subdivision. Do you have anyone here to speak? Okay.
Okay.
Well, yeah, no, we, this is fine. We were discussing this up. So we're going to go into executive session for zoning to go over the Centourage plant.
I didn't see that at first.
Okay. I'm sorry, that's my fault. I was jumping ahead. So we'll do the zoning adjustment for 52 Lake Forest, Seven Crafton from MH to R2. See, I'm here to speak to that.
Good evening.
Evening. You'll want this one.
That, that boy was like this work very well.
We are just requesting the zoning for the, for duplexes in this area of rezoning.
Are the duplexes there already?
No, that's for the building structure.
New construction, okay. So right now it's MH going to R2. Have you, is this your first stop or have you, have you done any of the other activities required or some changes?
I've done all the activities.
Okay, which are?
As far as sending the paperwork out, the mailing, getting to the newspaper, yes, all that's complete.
Okay.
Yes, I did the complete packing.
Okay. This is awesome, awesome. Any questions from the commissioners?
What is that address?
52 Lake Forest and Seven Crafton. And you said that'd be two duplexes?
Four.
Four duplexes.
Can I get your name for the rep?
Patrick Webb.
And just as a point of clarity, where we're talking four duplexes, eight install, correct?
It is correct, yes.
So you did four duplexes, so eight total.
Correct.
Did you receive any feedback from anybody? No, no, is there any concerns or anything for neighbors or anything?
Not in my eyes.
Okay.
So.
We're ready.
Mr. Webb, I know I gave your wife the, all of the information that would be required to give this was rezoned for the setbacks, the property win and everything for the, for the duplexes.
Correct.
Okay, so that's going to meet the criteria.
If we had the duplexes, we'll have bring the plan before I book a permit, so you will see them before you get in.
Right.
Yes.
When she was in the office, I, I wanted her to know that there was certain criteria to follow for the R2 zoning and if that would meet the needs of what you were wanting to put there.
Yes.
Okay.
Are these two, the, the two addresses basically side by side on the corner?
The four, the four duplexes, yes, there are four.
Well, no, you got seven Crafton and?
You had two parcels.
You had two parcels, right? They're right there together?
Yes.
So on the corner, like it?
Yes.
Okay.
So it'd be like two and two?
I was, I was looking at it on Google Maps, that's why.
Well, on Lake Forest, it'll be, it'll be four, depending on how you look at it, from Crafton Street to Lake Forest. You would have four lined up each piece of, probably one is sixty by two, another three are fifty by two hundred. So we'll make sure to do the setback and we'll get ten percent for each side of building codes. But it will be total for not two, four.
Right. I was talking about the parcels, those two.
Parcels, yes, so we'll have to get, that's what we want the rezoning to be, four different parcels, four different nine on one addresses, whatever procedure is.
I got you.
Yes. So we want at the end, we want to have four nine on one addresses for the duplexes.
You got me. Um, any other questions?
No questions.
Concerns?
Any concern about?
Did they put the sign up and put it in the paper?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, he did.
They put it, they did that and then they sent the certified letters out every time.
Prison, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, not absent, seen actual site plans and setback. Excuse me, the setbacks aren't, not at this time.
Thank you. Any comments from the public?
Yes.
Yes.
Regarding this?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, you forget about our conversation about five minutes ago before this started?
What?
One where I told you that I would like to burn that right there, because I didn't have none of this around here. Sir, can you step to the microphone? You just kept telling him that nobody had talked to me.
Well, you didn't say anything to talk about when I came in here, we should have been talking.
Yeah, I talked, I wasn't joking.
Okay, well, what's, what's other than that?
I don't want it. This has been a peaceful neighborhood ever since the seventies when we moved in. Okay, we don't need anymore. We are landlocked. We do not need anymore in there. We've already been through this. We went through this when Rogers and Dillon bought that other lake. We went through all of this and the man that you're dealing with over there, he was one of the main ones that did not want it.
Man, did he?
Yeah, Tom, one you want to buy the land from.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I guess his mind has changed now. And then as far as other concerns, it's going to be nice. I actually live on the side street. So it's not going to be any riff raps. We're going to have private fences and not only living on the right side. It's about progress, you know, evolution. It increases the property value. It's going to help the community. Mayflower Water Company alone, they have eighty water meters, so they make over a thousand dollars a month coming to Mayflower Water Company. It brings adversity, more revenue, it helps with schooling, employment, tax dollars. It's going to help small, pop franchises like Parks, SmaH, both banks, the donut shop, all called Tyra. So it's going to help bring revenue to the city of Mayflower. And mind you, I live next door to where I'm building, so I wouldn't build any mess my children sleep there. So I wouldn't have my hazardous or riff raps where I sit and lay my head.
It's in my understanding that you're trying to go back out to the river.
And then I do my, I sell my house, I'm proud of my children. I have three kids on my children, because I have several problems.
But you wouldn't want it.
If I'm not there, you're going to be there.
Where you going to lay your head?
I'm going to be there doing this process of.
See, it's the same thing with Tony Law right now. He ain't going to be laying his head there no more either. So nobody cares. Nobody cares. He's moving up north.
Well, we have one person with a name and we have a whole row of yays. So I don't know how you want to.
Y'all would live.
But I'll do whatever it takes, you know?
You are, you all with this? You're for this?
Oh, no.
Okay, so we don't have a bunch of them.
Yeah, slowly. I only, I only heard one name so far. So I do whatever it takes to be within requirements and guidelines to make it.
Microphones right here.
We got people, yeah, we got people driving through there forty and fifty mile an hour. It's fifteen from one way and twenty from the other.
That's not, that'd be a patrol.
Yes.
Yeah, traffic control.
And it's traffic.
Traffic control is irrelevant to this. That's.
So if I wanted to do it on your street, it would be okay. Traffic control wouldn't be a problem for you?
If you wanted to build on my street and you were within the zoning, yes, you could build. Know why? Because it's your land.
Well, this is, yeah, this is my land here. You come in here and tell me what I can and can't do with it. So we don't want to go there.
Sir?
We don't even want to go down.
Sir?
You tell me what I can and cannot do on my own.
You're telling me what he can do with his land.
It's not his land.
He's buying it.
But it's not his right name?
But when he buys it, it will be his. And if you bought land next to me, which you do not own right now, it would then be yours to do with as you please.
Except you would come in there and tell me where I had to put stuff, just like you're telling him, where he's going to have to put stuff.
There's zoning rules that he would have to comply with.
Okay, but it's his land. He can do with it what he wants to.
Within the law, yes, you're right. Just like you, just like me, just like Kent, you can apply the law for the zoning ordinance.
Well, I'm telling you, we don't want it in there. People that live there don't want this in there. Because here's another thing that sticks in the hat. We went through this when Rogers and Dillon bought all that other stuff from Crafton. It's got it back behind my house and across the road. He tried to zone it, R2. And it, and it got shot down.
Can you tell me how that's relevant to this request?
Because here it is again. If it gets there, then it's everything. But you open the door for Lotte Dottie and everybody to come in there and be whatever they want.
I think right now we've got some others. Let's just step, we've got time here. Let's hear everybody out here. Yes, sir, I'm up here. Yeah, I just want to hear everybody out in one bubble. If that's okay, James?
Sir, put your big mind, turn to the microphone, please. If you shouts from the audience, will not be acknowledged. And repeated shouts from the audience will be denied.
Four duplexes, oh, two lots?
That's correct.
I understand.
That's incorrect. It, it's two lots as we speak, but once it approved, we get a rezoning, it's a total of four lots with one lot being sixty by two hundred and the other three lots being fifty by two hundred.
Fifty by two hundred?
Nice eye.
Sixty.
One is sixty by two hundred and three of them will be fifty by two hundred.
Which meets zoning. Or Kaiser?
My next question here.
Sir, can you step to the microphone? Sir, can you step to the microphone? Does everybody, can everyone in here hear me about the microphone? Is there anyone who can't hear me right now?
We had a tough time out here.
Okay, now I'll, I'll get a microphone a little bit closer because we keep having this stuff out there. I need you to be at the microphone so we can hear you guys.
Well, why would you not go to property that's already zoned or what you're on today to do it?
I would love to, but I'd buy some property for sale that's already zoned. But right now that's.
All Mayflower, there's no property that you can buy.
I haven't found.
Correct.
I haven't found for sale and I'm not yet to date, no, but if I will, if I'm interested, I will purchase that as well.
He's most likely right. There's not a lot of that zoned property within the four square miles of Mayflower. Remember, we're only four square miles. We're, we're, we're tiny. We're not a lot of land. We're locked by the railroad, by the highway and by the lake. So those all have, those all have easements. Those all have like the railroad, we can't, we can't get close to it. We can't get close to the highway. We can't get close to the lake. So, yeah, we're, I mean, when you look at Mayflower, you're like, there's all this stuff. But we're really kind of locked.
We're expanded, expanding challenge.
Yeah, exactly. You're, you're a hundred percent. Because we got four square miles to, to work with and. Part of that is already taken up by Union Pacific, the lake and all that fun stuff. So there's, he's probably right. There's probably not another R2 that's up for sale. You know, we've had people who, who want to relocate here in Kent because there's, there's not for sale what they, what they want. Others have to approach private landowners and say, hey, I've got this idea. Are you willing to sell your land? And it might not be up for sale today, but when they get that offer, they might say, yeah, I might do that. But yeah, just the ones on the market right now, it's not a whole lot of the lot.
So I think we got someone behind you, sir. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I basically said what I want to say, that I am, I'm.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, sir, sir.
What was your name?
My name's Craig Fowles.
Craig, I appreciate the fact that you came to the microphone. You had questions. You asked us to call matter. I appreciate that.
Well, there's no reason to get up about it.
I, I totally agree. And I just want to point out that I appreciate your, your compliment.
Thank you for giving it all, turning to speak.
Hundred percent.
I'm Keith Fowles. I'm his twin brother that are down the street. We hit a long lake for a drive.
Okay.
And I guess maybe my first question, I will ask Mr. Webb. You want to do this project, why in the world would you want to just build four single family residences instead of duplexes in a single family residential area? Why would you want to go to duplexes?
Duplexes is good for the community, is good for the different property, for the generation of wealth of my children, my family. It's just good. It's better than else for the community. We have trailers now, which is no problem, but you know, we want to, we want to.
Not be allowed back here. Would any Friday turn them in there or, or dog?
Right.
Not be allowed back here. And will we go on?
We want to approve this, okay, this is you saying. We want to.
Duplexes. I'm getting duplexes or a rent. There's nothing wrong with rent, but they don't have to pay for all the rent in a single family red neighborhood.
Well, I think, and I think you and Mr. Webb are looking at it from two different perspectives. You're looking at the neighborhood and what's already there. Mr. Webb is looking for investment. He's looking to invest in our community and.
Oh, we go any investment in our community.
Right.
Our making.
Right, I get, I'm, I'm just, I'm.
This is about changing rules and making it true.
Well, it's, it's, no, this is horrible. This is what happens in every city across the country. That's why there's rezoning boards in every single big corporation in town in the entire country, because this is a normal process. But that's why it's a complicated, so that people can come and say, hey, I don't want this and this is the reason why, so that we can't then debate and then discuss it.
Do you know where this is coming from? It's just from y'all?
Sir, I can't even begin to see what.
I'm sorry, there would be more people here if they knew about this. I was never notified of anything, heard of it by word of mouth just the other day.
Okay.
This is not even a fair representation of, of the people that would be here. How many people here are for this project? Right hand. And how many people are against it? It'd be a whole lot different than that if everybody knew what was going on here, see.
Well, we want to give some concrete relevant objections.
Well, I understand that. The road of Crafton and Lake Forest are narrow roadblocks. I'm telling you, when you pass a long W in Crafton, you need to be careful.
I know, I look at Cross Street a bit.
Thank you. Well, that's first. All we need is additional traffic in the neighborhood. It's already a fairly congested neighborhood. Most of the lots on the streets are about fifty foot of street front. It's already a fairly dense population. This is only going to exacerbate. And that, you know, that's reason enough that it is. You get cars parking on that narrow road, you really got a dangerous situation.
That's the thing. The, the zoning rules would not permit street parking. That's other than.
It's going to happen.
No, it's not.
When, when you've got eight duplexes in that small of an area, eight families living there, you can tell me what the zoning regulations are. I'm telling you, in reality, it's going to happen and it will be dangerous.
And those cars are probably going to get ticketed or towed. The code enforcement, Chris, he's, he's.
Well, if he's allowed to do this, it's plain dangerous from the get in.
What's, well, that's what I'm saying. You guys are giving me this word like dangerous. What's dangerous? He said it's been peaceful. How is this?
There's no gun charge. Maybe at that point, there's no way there's not going to be an accident if there's a car or if they're on the road.
We're a little bit past that. We're not, cars aren't going to be on the road.
Well, that's, that's nice to say, but it's not going to happen.
The duplexes have to have driveways for the cars, paved driveways for the cars to park in. If they're parked on the street, call cops. Get them parked in.
And now, how many bedrooms are going to be in each year?
Uh, two to three.
Two to three. So you're going to have at least sixteen parking spots?
No, it's going to be.
That's what this says. It's going to have two parking spots for every year.
Okay, it's going to be a parking pad in front. The difference, what we have to realize, difference between this, these duplexes and any other invested property is I personally live in. So this is going to be taken.
For it's, it's my family, my children are going to be here. I'm not going to sell my house on Crafton. We have.
The bedroom.
It's not, well, regardless, the difference is.
I don't hear my stuff. But that's broken, dude.
And then one more thing you got. If we get approved money.
Oh, no. Then what's your planning? Then, I'm here today. I've got other experience here.
If we get approved.
Just stick into the rules.
Sir, 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 Mr. Webb is, sir, Mr. Webb's trying to talk. Can you keep getting in his personal space? I'm going to ask you to stop, please.
For, for an example, if we get approved money, we're not going to build all four duplexes too. It might be one a year or one every other year. It's not all four are going to go the same year. So we get approved this year, we're going to build one this year. It might be next year we build a second. And it might be the end of next year we build a third. So all four are not going to, whether it makes a difference, all four are not going to travel.
One try three go out, that's like.
If, if this move were done, it would make a difference.
That's a step one of.
A hundred, yes. It might be three, four years.
You know, it's the same program, it's the same process as this major development going in up here. They're not going to build all five a year.
Yes.
In the first year. It's a five year process. So they get approval and it's, and it's a progress.
If we build one in four years, I'm planning on being there in four years.
Sure.
And then, then we will have a problem.
Well, I mean, this is why, this is what I need. I need concrete examples with, with, we, we can't. The board, the commission here can't use examples of, well, they're going to violate the law, so we don't want it here. That, we can't assume that a developer is going to violate the law. We have to, we have to say that the developer is a good person and has good intentions. We have to assume the best about an intended.
Well, sure.
Mr. Webb has never given this community reason to doubt his integrity or his.
I love the man. I'm a lady in front of the man. Just the project.
So what we need, so what I, if, if you just plan, don't like the project because you don't want it in your backyard, say so. But I can't, the, the commission cannot consider hypotheticals about law or, we can't assume that.
I understand.
Break the law. That would be pretty crazy. So we're not going to sue that he's going to break the law and put a bunch of cars on the street.
Well.
We're not going to assume he's going to violate.
About the same token, when there's eight families in that small of a space, there's going to be a time where the parking is not going to be ample and there's going to be cars parked on that road. And then that becomes a dangerous situation.
Well, that's assuming that there's a law, which I just said, if he gives that as a reason to deny his laws.
So if at one there's a car parked out there on the road.
Like I just.
We call the police. Police are going to be out there every time, take care of it.
Yeah, call the cops. Say, there's someone that we parked. It's dangerous. I can't get around something.
So you're seriously considering allowing duplexes in a single family residential area?
If the request comes, we won't consider it. That is our job to consider it, yes. Consider means debate, discuss, take in comments. We, if somebody comes in and says, I want to rezone this, this board does not go. No. We say, okay, what do you got on the plate? And we listen and then we consider, like you just said. If there's a ton of opposition, then it might not be great. But we have to hear it and we need concrete, real world examples of why somebody doesn't want it in their backyard.
When this will be decided, do you have, do you know that?
It won't be tonight because we, we've not had this much of, of opposition to a request. So we are going to listen to every.
Really?
Pardon me.
You've never had this much opposition?
No.
I, I'm telling you, I think most of these people realize that there's people that aren't aware of what's going on in the neighborhood and they'd be opposed to it as well. And then, and what I was proposing was to get a petition, to have every homeowner in the area sign that they're opposed to this.
You can do that.
And if we get the vast majority of this neighborhood to agree they're opposed to the project, is that going to carry enough weight to?
It will carry weight, but it will be one factor amongst many that we consider. But it will, absolutely, it will come into. I mean, when we, when we reconsider rezoning, that's the reason we want public comment, because we want everyone to come in and say, hey, you know, there's, there's this, there's this NIMBY attitude. It's an acronym. It's called not in my backyard. People get something new and they're like, hey, well, my world's been the same for sixty years. I don't want it in my backyard. Now, guess what? Progress happens and it's coming to your backyard. So some of that, sometimes that happens. Sometimes it doesn't. But that's why we have these open forums, so that we can get feedback.
We appreciate that.
Because if you, if you all didn't come and like, hear your feedback, then we'd be like, okay, well, everything's fine. Pass it. No problem. And then everyone's paying. That's why it's so important for people to come to these meetings and to give the feedback and to participate instead of just like waiting for something to happen and then going and raging on Facebook, why, why does that happen? Well, show up and do something like you guys did. You showed up and you participated. That's fantastic. And I would encourage you guys to do that more. Bring your names, bring your friends, bring your enemies. Because the more people are participating.
I want everybody to raise your shirt. There, there's more of us to this much to say it here.
The, the more, the more people that participate, the, the better things are because then, then we get the opinions, the insights of.
Every place. This has all been tried before and demised before for good reason and there are no reason for any change of art at this point.
Well, and this is, this is why we need the feedback, so that we can consider these things.
This has been attempted before, was rejected and should be again.
One year was after, I don't know.
That was approximately twenty years ago.
Twenty years.
Back in. I remember, but I don't. There was a manager of the county. Good evening. I'm Melissa Oliver, everything down because I want to be sure, remember everything on the staff. I'm officially, I'm Mayflower's citizens' angerer of the Crafton subdivision. This isn't the first time our community has faced a rezoning request nearly twenty years ago. Rogers and Dillon tried to rezon over thirty lots from Armond to R2. Now Mr. Webb seeks to rezon the corner lots with four duplexes. When, and he has had conversations, me and him had a conversation about my laws. And when I shared my concerns with Mr. Webb, he responded, Rogers and Dillon wants to mitigate it, community and mobile homes. Duplexes will look better than mobile homes. You need to look at it as a positive, not an negative. When the prior rezoning meeting didn't go as Mr. Dillon wanted, he threatened to put triggers on every lot. And there was a mandatory order at that statement. Yet he has come to, to why? Because rezoning would increase his profits and that's what this is really out here all about. While I've agreed, knew anything would look better than the aging mobile homes currently there, I have to respectfully disagree that the proposed duplexes would add value to our community. I'm positive that it will add sixteen to forty additional cars to our streets. Two years ago, my adult heing cap son was involved in an accident on Crafton while crossing the street to go fish with his dad one morning. I'm positive that increased traffic will only heighten the risk of similar or worse incidents. Yes, we are an aging community, but our concerns are very real. More traffic, more noise, strain on our infrastructure, declining property values and difficulty selling our existing homes by being surrounded by the family homes. I've talked to two relatives about real estate agents. And when I told them what was going on, both of their response was, uh, my family has lived here for nearly forty years and our neighborhood has always been peaceful. We're already dealing with the impact of the lake drawdown, which will last for years to come. And now we face rezoning that would permanently change the character of our community. This isn't just about buildings. It's about our safety, our families and the future of our neighborhood. Many of us which have called home for decades. I've spoken with many of my neighbors about this issue and a few, including our prior councilman, Colonel Bill Polknet, said he may not be able to make this meeting. And he's not here. But he said he would be available to speak with any of you regarding with his thoughts on the rezoning. Our community stands together in opposition to this rezoning request and asks that you listen to our concerns. We don't want to become the next Queens man. Thank you for your time.
Can, can I ask why you assume it would become a Queens man?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Can I ask why you assume it would become a Queens man?
Well, we had an incident. It's been, I don't even remember how long ago it was, but we had one of the triggers. But, we had one of the trailers, I'm thinking, I can't remember if it was, I don't remember what trailer it was. There was a meth lab.
There was one on the corner. One that made third, that did mobile police.
There was a meth lab.
So, there was a meth lab and a trailer, so how is, or mobile home, so how are the duplexes related to becoming Queens Manor? I'm, I'm struggling to make the connection between a meth lab and a mobile home and a new duplex becoming Queens Manor.
The duplexes are, they're only gonna be new for a little while.
That's everything in the world.
This is true, this is true, but if he is not vigilant, um, he lets, allows him to do these, to rent these duplexes, then we're gonna have issues.
So, doing this for investment property, do you think it would behoove him to be a pretty, it's who he lives in there since, it's his investment property and if they tear it up, it's gonna be his property, his province?
I don't think that either, four years from now. I don't believe this is a long-term investment.
I don't think I'll be here four years from now.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna be here four years.
I'm, I'm. I'm not gonna be here four years from now, it's gonna be a freaking mess.
We have a lot of, we're about aging, retired, handicapped, disabled people in this area. Is what our biggest fears come to fruition, where are we gonna go? I'm sixty-three, I can't just let them settle on earth. Well, first of all, it's gonna be harder for me to settle on earth. Second of all, I'm sixty-three, I can't live in a homestead. This is where I have lived for forty years and I'm planning on being here until I expire. So, what are we gonna do in our worst fears coming to fruition? That's our concern.
I want to go back to the parking and Mr. Webb, if you could, I'm sorry, sir. I, we'll let him go first, I'm sorry. We'll, we'll get you here in just a second. Sure, man, I wanted to go with a thank you so much. Thank you, you put a lot of time, thought in that Queens or shit that, thank you. If they start continuing to come to the planning commission meetings, measure it.
I have been living for forty-seven, like, towards drive.
Well, sir, I bet you.
I, I.
Pat, thank you, sir.
Okay, I'm like concerned is the drainage. There's real bad drainage in that area and we're putting in four more buildings, roofs, driveways. There's not gonna be any land to percolate the water and it's just gonna run down Gary Amber and Velvet, it's gonna be right along the hill. It's coming down there already. Most of the water that comes off that hill, they've got a channel that goes right down the middle of their yard. It's where a lot of drainage goes and it starts coming over the road, it's gonna be in their yard. So, that's my main concern and I think that's a metric, my main concern when they're turning down the plants, if you need.
Uh, Pat, I will tell you, that is extremely relevant and that is exactly the kind of information that this commission needs to hear. That's, that's like watershed, because, yeah, if we pave over all that ground, that water's no longer going to be absorbed, it, it has to run somewhere. So, yeah, that absolutely has to be included in this.
Thank you so much.
All right, appreciate you paying for your time.
So, we're gonna stick on the parking.
Okay, sir.
Please, sir, go second. Uh, that was a great comment, as far as the drainage, we will, we'll be drainage water being, uh, we will get with the code and if we have to get a, uh, flooder plan or a, or hand in a ship, whatever we need to get our permit and whatever.
We're having trouble here, I see that.
Whatever the official or the permit or anybody sees fit to make this work properly as far as code is, uh, ditch drain and still, whatever they need, we'll go with the regulations and the code requirements and make it up to code where to be successful, to where it's gonna drain the way it needs to drain.
Okay.
And we can bring in professionals to do that and shoot the grain, laser, whatever we need, we'll do that up to your specs to make it approved, to get it done right.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, a lot of, yes, yes, sir. Hey, a lot has been discussed about parking.
Okay.
All right, we're admittedly at step one of a hundred and fifty, we said, whatever, maybe. What is your vision for the parking? You touched on it just briefly, but I wanna make sure everyone hears and understands from you.
My idea for the parking, for number one, we have a two-hundred-foot setback. Once we do your twenty-five-foot setback, we have two hundred feet. So, we can push the duplexes back far enough to where, this would be my idea, unless you have a better idea. I was gonna pour the concrete across all four duplexes where there'll be parking lots, we can do a handicap parking space if we need to. But, we're gonna push the duplexes back far enough to where you will have four cars in front of each duplex where if somebody wants to park behind the car, they have that right. But, we're not gonna have the parking backed up to where they're on the street, we're gonna push them back. I don't wanna drive down the street like, they know, they see me walk anymore. I don't wanna see that, I don't wanna isolate myself, I don't wanna leave my house, exercise with my family, and they see me every morning exercising. I don't wanna go past parking and trash and trash cans on the ground and wet these cups, I don't want that myself. So, I understand that process, so I'm gonna make sure it's top line, just where you have a property manager, and this is not my first rodeo, I've been in the state over twenty years. So, this is, this, I don't know, this is how I be my children, this is not a gang.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Very, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't get my name all along.
He just asked.
What?
Tony Hackler. Uh, has the gang of fish been involved?
I have no idea.
We're off of close to the lake.
Okay.
Uh, that was in fact, the original one they're talking about twenty years ago. The gang of fish was very much involved.
Yeah, they, as far as that, do you know Mr. Webb, had his gang of fish? They have not been able to contact them, we can't.
Okay, um, I guess I would reach out to them just proactively, you know? Um, and that way we can just cross that off the list, um, just so they can either, they can either say, yeah, sure, or.
Sure.
Like, I will do that, thank you. Any other, yes, sir.
Hello.
Hello.
Go ahead, Gary Hammer.
Gary.
Not the problem that Pat Beatty was talking about? And when the city put their towel through the, uh, through the street, well, I get water from three different directions. I get it from, uh, Crafton, I get it from the other side of Crafton, and I get it from, uh, all three ways and, and just, just a eight-inch towel, right? And flushing a shop. So, with city, they said tough luck, so that was a very good answer. But, that's what you get from city when you try to.
Who, who, who'd you talk to?
City mayor, somebody in the city, uh, and that was many years ago, they told me to flush it off, so I did.
Will you do give mayor?
What's that?
Will you come to the next city, I want city council.
Okay.
Will you come to the next city council?
Sure will, I get my stuff fixed.
One hundred percent.
Okay, I got something to say to him. Now, he's a great guy, great family, this is, this is not personal.
Yeah.
But, there's some neighborhoods, you can build duplexes. This is not one, as, is this a city? Correct, this is a city, right, city may block?
Yeah.
Is this not a democracy?
Well, I don't.
Well, all these people are saying no, and you're acting like you're not here.
Oh, no.
You need to hear the people, say, we need to be reporting people, those are people.
We are.
I mean, I'm not trying to say you're not ready to defend it, but you're sitting there like people are major mouth of.
Oh, no.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm giving you.
Yeah, well, let me, let me assure you that, well, first off, I don't need to give a vote because I'm chairman.
Right.
Uh, so, I, I don't give a say, not way or none, I just kinda give the.
Okay, in another reason, in another way, word is, word is to model all crap. One on, uh, Crafton, which what I live on, and I don't know where, whatever it is, uh, Lake Forest.
Yeah.
Well, I get water off of Lake Forest, and I get water off of Crafton, and I get water off the other craft.
Folks, I'm having.
And I get water off the other craft.
Really like to not have to ask.
Hey, don't let me talk, just joking, joking. Uh, I don't, I like to cut up a bit, but yeah, I get water everywhere from that. And I grew up in, by the shop's stench because of the water.
You probably get balled in there too, sir. You probably get balled in there from the water.
Well, the water's stopping's out, or he's a lord, it's stopping itself out, I don't know, but hey, it's, it works on the worst.
Well, but.
But, that's, but that's my opinion, sir.
True.
And if the water coming off of his, his duplexes, it's gotta go somewhere.
Sure.
I know he said he can do this, that, and the other, a wrong wooden building, that's been, that's been draining fifty years like that. And no one, and, well, they're just gonna spend a million dollar for a landscape, which he's not gonna do, but.
I'm sorry, I, that, I guess, I, I don't know what you talked to back today, told you tough luck, get out, uh, out. So, I'll apologize for them because that should not happen. Um, definitely bring it, come to the next city council meeting because I'm, I'm pretty sure that, I mean, um, I know our, our, our road guys, Diddy Joe.
He's on the debit.
That, put it down.
He told you on the debit, he told you tough luck, that's what it was, he could joke with you, joke. He said tough luck, Eric, I gotta do the city government here.
Well, yeah, and that's probably true, probably at the time, he, he took his orders from there.
So, how can you get changed?
Well, now, I mean, there's a new mayor, so I mean.
Oh, my gosh.
I, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I can't speak for the whole city council.
Right.
But, I can speak for myself and, and I would like to hear more because if, if this.
Man, I haven't mentioned this ever, but.
Yeah, and, and that's the city's job to, to deal with drainage.
Right.
And, and that's, I say, I agree with them, I probably are, that's, uh. I mean, that's.
This is not guessing.
No, but, but no, that, that's, that is one hundred percent of, of an absolute roading concern and it has to be dealt with, both, both for future construction consideration. Um, but we also need to address the problem you're having now, big drains, you're getting water coming every direction.
I'm getting out all the, the eels that's, that's, there's two mobiles that don't.
Yeah.
I get it off of the yellow one on, on the Crafton, and I get it off the red one on, on Lake Forest. And I get it down Lake Forest, coming down, uh, uh, north. Then I get it, it's making another circle, coming back up Lake Forest. Then it runs all the way through them pipes I'm talking about, goes in my shop, comes out, but my that kind of, the driveway's flooded, the yard's flooded. You can't walk out the backyard automatically. Used to have a drainage, a little string, but now it got so bad, it goes, there's so much water running there, that's out there. So, the water running, it wants it because of that eight-inch.
Yeah, yeah, the mayor has one of those things going right through his yard too, so, yeah.
Your yard be kicked off too, be kicked off the mayor.
Sometimes.
Yes. Anyway, I, it's nothing personal with my brother there, but, but.
But, that, but that's, that's a real valid concern.
Right.
But, I, I, uh, I do want you to come to our next city council though and bring that up because in our last city council meeting, we just approved a whole bunch of road and drainage improvements.
So, wait, you're telling me that they're gonna go down there and turn down the street if they just pay up?
Oh, no, no, I don't, no. The street department came to us with a list of, of projects they wanted to do, so if it's just been laid over, I have it out, it's on that list.
It's been a while, I mean, it's, it's been about two or three seasons. It's already cracked.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember the whole list.
Right.
Uh, we, we looked at it, the dollar amount, we are, um, but, uh, but definitely come to us because if that's regularly happening and it's flooding your property and if it could be, it could be mediated with, you know, large tollard or something, then that's something that the city needs to look at, that's our responsibility to get the drainage.
Right, that's, that's about the view.
Well, I'm.
I'm not, well, he's gonna follow the water that runs off.
Yeah.
Unless he was spending a million dollar on landscape and put underground irrigation and drainage to it there, hey, that's fine, that's not gonna happen.
Well, yeah, and I mean, well, you know, if, if this goes forward and I don't know if it will or not, like I said, I don't know how to, to, to vote, I don't, I don't get voted, I just heard it.
Right.
Uh, but, uh.
Just remember, there are the people.
Yeah.
We don't wanna vote for you.
Hundred percent.
So, remember that.
Absolutely, I, I told people.
All right, that's all I had.
Let me say this, the, the first step for this was coming to the planning.
Right.
And then you make your decision. If they're, if they approve it, then it goes before the city council.
Right.
So, it would have to be done in an ordinance in order for it to be passed.
There's an order, so it's gotta be done. Yeah, there's an order, right.
Yeah, so that, that's an order, that order that it has to go, it comes before the planning commission. You know, if they don't.
This is a parameter here.
Right, and if, if they don't approve it, then, you know, that's it. But, if they approve it and then it goes to the city council. So, it is your city council that will make the final decision.
And the next city council meeting is in two weeks from today on the twenty-fourth, year six third. So, I want to see all your.
Wouldn't you want me here for my drainage?
What's that?
What, that you want me here for the drainage?
I'm sorry, say it again.
What, that, do you want him here?
Oh, the, the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, yeah.
Uh, six third.
I'll be here.
That's the next city council meeting, so, and like I said, everybody come and give your input, that's, that's exactly what we want. Here in the city council, come and participate and let us know, cause if people don't show up, we don't know. And then we make the decision, if people are upset about it, we didn't know there was any opposition. We love, we love your opposition as long as it's relevant. Constructive.
Okay, I, I.
I appreciate all the time, sir.
I'll see you in two weeks.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have some, some questions that came up, um, the petition that you were talking about. How many names would have to be on that to make?
I tell, yeah, they can't hear ya, um.
Oh, I'm sorry. How many names do you?
There is, there is a number and I can't remember what the statute says now, um, as far as the number of percentage of opposition that would automatically just be like, no, I'd have to look it up, I can't remember the number, it's fifty percent, sixty percent, something like that.
Okay, what info would be included on that petition, on the petition? I'm assuming everyone had to sign their name, their address, phone number? Do they need to, like, have a checkbox of oppose?
But, I, I would, now, I would write the petition to where it, it, it says that, um, you would, you would write the petition as an opposition petition, so the language would say, I oppose this, so that you don't have to worry about check marks and someone checking the wrong box or getting confused. It would just be if they sign it, they oppose. That way you don't have to worry about yea or nay, you'll just straighten this.
Would I need to have someone in the city to help me write that petition anymore?
Barbara, what do you think?
I don't, what I would probably do is like, um, James said, is I would just say, then the people who are signing below oppose.
For the Craftings subdivision.
The rezoning from M H to.
Oppose it and then just have them, you know, sign their name, their address, probably their phone number.
Yeah, print, a hundred percent, yeah. You go and get a bunch of doctors signing, they'll never be able to read it.
Okay, um. You said that the next council meeting is the Tony Board.
Yep. When would?
I have a question.
When would those?
I have a question for everyone.
Well, I got one here. When would that be? I would say probably within the next, see, within the next two weeks, then when, when we meet, um, is, is that enough time for you?
Well, that's why I was asking, I had the community people that would help me go around and get the petitions.
I was just thinking, if you have petitions at the city council meeting.
That's what I wanted to try to do.
Then, then we could, then we could discuss it there also at council and then we could discuss it more than the planning commission. We don't ever meet, just like get together and chat because that's illegal, so it has to be an open public forum.
Right.
Uh, so, yeah, sunlight and all that, so you can see what we're doing and not doing stuff crazy behind doors. Uh, so, the downside of that is we can't meet super regularly, I can't just pick up the phone and call Chad and be like, man, what do you think about this? I can't do that.
Right.
Uh, so, we have to wait for all of our schedules to wind and get here, so it, it kind of slows us down, slows the process down. But, maybe you can have them here in two weeks, when we meet for city council.
If I'm liable to get this all put together in two weeks and I come to council and ask for an extension.
You'll be, you'll be listed, I mean, you would absolutely come to just get to council, but I'm not gonna like you in two weeks, if you need more than two weeks. Just, just let me know, we, we run it each other, you got my number, just, just, just let me know, hey, I'm gonna need more time and cool. I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna restrict you to two weeks.
Okay.
Stop that, that's.
Um, now then, this is the paper that he brought up altogether. This is, um, all of the website, it is the R2 multiple-family residential, all the information. It's on website, I will, it's straight on the website. And it says, R2 district provides areas for median population density. The district is intended for those areas of manpower which, one, have the appropriate public infrastructure in place, including water, sewer and roads to handle the increases against the level. Two, contains multifamily dwellings, including duplex, triplex, fourplex, townhouses, guard departments, and the like. We don't currently have any of those in our community, except why. So, I'm not sure if this is reading or.
Regulation.
That this is.
That's R2, that's what he wants to come from.
Okay, so that's. Okay, so that's not.
That's not what you have right now, that's what he's wanting to move to, to allow all those things you're, you're reading there.
Okay, okay. Um, I didn't want to bring this up, but being that a planning commission, people, I think we need to do a simple Google search into his companies. There have been past problems, and he has been on, on not having license. I, I need to do a Google search. Cause I'm gonna, who is this guy? Who's he on? What's he done in that area? Um. There was an incident.
I can't hear you, she's in the microphone.
There was an incident, and.
Hold, hold right there, I'm so, I'm so sorry. Do we need to hear this out loud? Or we all take it away? I don't, I, I, I don't. Yeah, you can sit in there, me, you know. Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't think we need to really. I'm not gonna, we'll hear it. Right, maybe on public grounds. I would rather research it, but I don't know.
Okay.
But that is valid, I, I. Sure, yeah, absolutely, that'd be part of our due diligence, yeah, yeah, we, we would, we do that like we do.
A few last, a few couple comments before we wrap up. As far as our comment, uh, before we pull the permits, the city may, we have to have a license contract, so we have a license contract to pull the permits, so that a. See, as far as my personal business, I, like I said, I've been in business over twenty years, so I'm no different than any other company that has longevity. Uh, you have happy customers, you have sad, bad customers, so that's just no big deal. But as far as the licensing, there'll be a license contract for the permits, doing the construction work. As far as the waterdrives, the curves and gutters, I mean, the issue, I'm willing to work with, uh, I want to improve it, so we need to, uh, if I work with the fire department, we need the fire extinguisher, we need a street light on the street, whatever it takes, we're, I'm here to work together, so we can all approve it and create it, and make it, make it successful.
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for your time, I really appreciate it.
Appreciate you, man. One more, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Swyde, Shalonda Laver, and I just wanted to add to our comment, um, as she's trying to bring her scared. Uh, yes, we did, we had a slice revoked, uh, I don't work with you here. However, the, uh, the property or the building, the cost of giving us a license, which was fifteen hundred euro, um, that's an honor of. And then you put the customer a honey suit, um, we did complete that project, we did mention, everybody who worked on, was committed, worked on that. Having a certain reason, had to get a funding to grow the project, but when they don't, and you go like, and you know, and then to get why, you make the deal, why, they don't, they don't have the shit. So, since she's trying to actually bring the character to him, he's a great business, he's a big man of church, he's a great father, he's a great husband, he's a great builder, he's a great woman, he's a great person. So he's not gonna be able to do anything to harm, I have a plan there, but you're, it's just business. If you go four houses, guess what? We're gonna sell them, so it's gonna be a mess in front of me, either way it goes. Either way, we're trying to remember, that's all we're trying to do. If they're in position, that's not a, no people pray about it, either way, the way we're gonna find, and we're gonna find.
I'm sorry, I was a little late.
I apologize.
Did I get you saying, y'all will hold on to any decision until after the next meeting?
Yes, we're not making decisions tonight, yeah, because there's, there's, there's too much to consider for us to be able to make.
I can sure understand that.
I don't like that. Yeah.
It's far more considered.
Exactly, that'd be.
But did you say that this will be after the next meeting, that the final decision will be made?
Right, the process would be like, we'll make a decision, and if, if this body decides to approve it, it then goes to the city council for presentation there, and then the city council, we'll give the final up or down on the actual result.
Okay, y'all, the planning commission?
Yes, and I'm. Uh, there's, there's one more, we're, we're missing one, uh, the city meeting at, uh, the, uh, Quorum Court, uh, meeting. So, uh, there is another one, um, I sit on city council also, I'm the only planning commission person on city council, too. Um, so I'll be there.
If, if you will give us a chance to get a little better organized, or, I'm sure we'll present, you know.
Yeah.
Back to the way you're on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, that's, that's what these public forums are about, is to get all the public's concerns, questions, then, and, and, and issues brought out, so that we can talk about, so, yeah.
But this, uh, this information that Rudinia from the city of Mayflower basically disqualified this project.
What, what information?
That there needs to be multifamily dwellings in the neighborhood, there are none.
No, that's, that's if, that's if the rezoning to R two takes place, then you can have multifamily dwellings. Right now, you're going to H, right now, this is what, this is R two here, this is what he wants to go to.
Tomorrow, we'll be to R.
No, to H to R two. So, the R two would allow all of these things, it doesn't require, but it allows them. Right now, you say it does, you say you don't have them right now, because the zoning you have right now doesn't allow them. This would allow, not mandate, but allow. That top one is what he's requesting we move those two lots into, to allow the multifamily dwellers.
Well, I, I do appreciate y'all, your, our.
Absolutely, that's, that's the work you're doing, to, to listen to people. On the twenty-fourth. That, Austin? Yeah, I, I tell people online all the time, please come to these meetings, that's the only way that we really find out whether the public's intention or our concerns is. Cause like, when people put stuff on Facebook, we don't like Facebook, although we try to stay off it, actually. Um, but coming to meetings actually allows us to.
My guess is this will be anywhere near an issue, the last we got of it is people, if it was single family homes, uh, that people purchase and pass in, and have the best interest to the neighborhood, just like every other homeowner in the neighborhood today. And why he wants to build duplexes instead of single family homes is beyond me, other than one theory that seems to make a lot of sense.
Well, Kerry said it's a best, I mean, and duplexes, from an invest, from an investor standpoint, a duplex does much better than a single family home, because you're renting to two families at a time, triplex, you get to rent to two families at a time. So from an, an investor's standpoint, you said you don't have any idea why he doesn't want to do that? Simply, he's an investor, and, and as, as an investor, he wants, everyone knows ROI, it's to turn on investment. As an investor, he's gonna look at, at all of his options, so he's gonna lay out four options in front of him, for what do you do with this land? And he's gonna look at his ROI for each one, and he's gonna probably pick his top two ROIs and say, which one is bigger payment or rear to build? I'm gonna smooth that one. This is my, my easiest to build top ROI, am I right, Chris, the way?
Yes, sir, you are correct.
That, so when you're looking at his, that's what I was saying earlier, you guys are looking at things from different perspectives, which is cool. It's, it's fine, everyone has their own perspective, you're looking at it from a long-term residential.
Sure.
In a family, well.
I mean, ROI is fine, the term of investment is fine, I've been in real life, yeah, yeah, plenty of that, yeah.
So that's.
Renters usually rent for a reason, if they're not a terrible place, uh, their kids or their dog, their pension money pays. And at the end of the day, that single family house will be worth a lot more than these duplexes that go for the drive.
It's rental property currently, they're renters in there now.
What's that?
It's currently rented, the property's in there on the, on, it's on the last one.
It's a lot of resale, I mean, I don't know.
That's, I mean, that's, when it comes to investment, it comes right down to straight sheets, dollars.
I know, they're, they're nice people, I've lived there, they go back and they do a lot, I'm in the neighborhood.
Yeah, well.
Bad idea.
Well, I mean.
Nothing will change that.
I mean, I just wanted to.
First of all, we're really gonna need more drivers in the area. There's more children in the area now than when I moved in eleven years ago, there are no sidewalks. These kids own, own the streets and buy singles and all skateboards, as much skateboards as possible. It's already dangerous enough, it's more to act, it's just landed in the back.
That's the majority of the city in the sidewalks. I'm sorry, the majority of the city doesn't have sidewalks, my street doesn't have sidewalks, my daughter runs her bike and her lawn, or her kids.
There are kids and Doug, they're gonna straight, and I make it there.
Well, sure.
And any more cars, it's just gonna be thousands more damage, most kids.
I, I totally understand, no.
Can't ask me to disappear, they're vanishing somewhere.
I, I get that, but your original statement was, you did not understand the law, I'm trying to help you understand the law. You have, you just.
It's a single family neighborhood.
I, I understand that.
At, at this point, it's like I've said, the board's, I've changed the rules, it's really, it's not fair, the people have been there for a long.
What, what rules would be changed? What rules?
That is a single family residential neighborhood.
Can you tell me where that is documented as a rule?
Every home in the neighborhood, the values of single family.
Why you're zoning that?
Right, but what I'm saying, it's, it's zoned that way, but there's a process qualified to change the zone. So what I'm asking is, what rule is broken if there is a process that is qualified to change itself? Help, help me understand.
I guess you have to change the rule.
Yes, it's a rule, it's, it's not the rule, it's the zone.
One, one more thing. I was not bashful with your husband, first and foremost, this is business. If the situation were reversed, and I was going to do your neighborhood, planning on building whatever, and it was different than what was existing, you would do the same thing? Well, we're in June twenty-five, and, uh, that happens to people that I know, that's the first one that it's going with, it's final, what's going on with this town, so.
But I wouldn't help if you bring it to a public marriage like this, uh, that's not necessary, that's.
Look, there was, it is, I, I, okay, I'll give you that, but there's been things that has been approved, that was overlooked, and I want them to do their due diligence. And that's all, all I was asking, there's not one, but I haven't met you, yes, I haven't met you, Patrick, I met your daughter, she is, you know, you know, that's just.
That's why I'm trying to do this for my beautiful daughters.
Well, I haven't, yes, give me, I don't want nothing to be in the personal of the entire guy, so, it's just, we have a single family, of course, we need, we all want to settle that.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Chang, it's, uh, we're getting, it's been bringing them back here a little, but we're starting here at the background two to three times. What are the next steps here?
I think that I.
First of all, I need, I need to get the names of the people that are here that have not spoken. Um, it's on this list, is Deontay McEwen, is he representing here? Uh, the Hammers are here, Billy Hill, are they here?
Actually, Jeff now.
Jeff.
Jeff, Jeff. Is he still, Jeff Hill, is he, he here?
No, not yet.
Tony and Debbie Long are here, uh, Rogers and Dylan, anybody representing them? Nathan Thomas Lewitt, and a Peterson, Joe Cotton.
Um, Jeff has been here, and he's been battling that for some time, we knew that he was on there.
Mr. Lee's here, um, Mr. Eckler's here, Pat Fain is here. Um, Gary Hammer, so Brian, Brian has a property near you.
Uh, I'm, I'm in, I'm in.
Okay, okay, so we, we have you, we have you and Belva, and then we have a, we have a Brian, and then we have a Jared Goff. Okay, so, okay, and it's what?
Fourth? Fourth?
I have no idea.
Jared Goff.
And is there a hand for naming some people that I don't have to? Belva's a Susan Lake, oh, sure.
Hey, uh, Barbara, um, I live on Crafton, also.
Right, okay. Yeah, are you on Crafton or Lake Forest?
I'm on Lake Forest.
Anybody else?
Uh, Preston Langley. Preston Langley?
Preston Langley.
On Lake Forest.
Any?
Eight, five, nine, you got it, how you say?
Yeah, that's.
Thirty-one.
Right, and y'all spoke, so I got the names of the people that spoke, so that's everybody, okay, and Mr. Miss. Okay, I'm good.
Okay, um, we will, uh, exit the zoning board and resume with our regular schedule.
We don't.
Um, we should have. Uh, yeah, let's take a five-minute commercial break, this is a very good idea for everyone to violate.
We remind everybody, July eighth is the next planning meeting, is it, I don't know.
Oh, we're not done yet.
No, I know, just in case if people leave.
Yeah, the next planning commission is, uh, July eighth, in case anyone, uh, is leaving, so definitely want, or everyone back. But this is, that's a very good. They would be.
Saturday, back in a fall.
You got, we're gonna be dealing with that.
It already is, a wild ass subject. We're motioning to come to the college. The place is always a place to get from Lake Forest. So wait, the last place. Cause in no way is that top control. Don't start.
Reach out for.
The fellow type.
That's for people, that's for people. That's for a good council. Very, yes.
Very, very.
That's a good question, they don't know. I said, I'm sure that they don't.
We are, I mean, every time. They go wrong. They all talk about.
I don't think the.
Appreciate it. That's all you can say. He is, he is well.
But ultimately, they just come apart.
Right.
So, yeah, I've never seen you even where you got this much opposition to, to where it would be. The person, right. So, it's not a hard person, so. The only time I've ever seen you prove.
You built a place with these things?
Yeah, right.
There's a lot of situation, so. You're not fashionable. You just put water. That's the name, that's red, because it's half a lot. No way you can build. Two or three days.
Uh, yeah, I, they were, she was talking about shit.
If I have to say it, I agree.
And, and there's, like, the water went off. I care. Was it any spot, was it any time other time? No, there's letters, you know, calls, no one chose. Yeah, so, yeah, this was totally different.
And like I said, I do. See my top finish off. This is not what we add to.
Yeah.
Is that gonna tell? All this. So could Benny Graham? See that? Said it's a, it wasn't going on. They put down.
Legal description.
Was it going on? Said, so you mean to tell me that?
That's what they're asking. That's very.
Right. Like I said, you know, look, so the game. That lady's, obviously, I don't think Derek stopped passing. We pulled up for five, but it lasted. Then, I mean, it's just, I mean, I grew up with Dallas, but it's weird. City. You start putting it on, so, but there's a difference. So, you know, rent it out wherever you want. Still got the same problem. Because, but they gave us one best of three. There's only five lots per.
See, these are, these are the ones, because this is Crafton, that's eighty-nine, Crafton goes.
And there are fifty-five.
And then this is like four.
Lots.
So they would.
Just because you're willing to zone it, doesn't mean you're gonna change life. So does that right? He's talking about turning the life this way. That's not part of the reason.
But you know what I'm saying? Perhaps, is that he's still. You still don't know.
You don't, you don't, yeah.
There's some concern, I was like. In that, in that area, whatever, somebody. He's written a lot of stuff. Fifty, five hundred. But, where he's coming up with a hundred fifty, he's got no time for one mission.
Oh, yeah, I, I will.
Now, I was able to take a look at it too. Where's, he's got those. So it's a pretty.
Saying that your husband is. Sure.
But then he dropped straight.
Not at that first, because then, you would make the decision, because it was very. Okay.
He care, he ready.
Good resume. Uh, site is in, Center Ridge is next up.
You're.
Yep. Your name, my name is Dustin Love, always hearing, uh, newer, case to out well. You're representing Center Ridge subdivision, Austin Road. Um, you should be pretty familiar with this one, we've gotten twice now. Last time we had things about the bottom gap, I remember five people, so that's what we're seeking tonight, is to get the visual government platform, so we can get our next project environment before. This, the subdivision, uh, two hundred and forty-seven lots, it's planned subdivision. Lot面积是 sixty feet by one fifteen foot. All single-family residential, like we discussed before, that's what we, our ability is. Lineup currently. Um, we maintain a lot of the original design we saw seen previously. Just working through comments with the city as well as, uh, I believe we discussed that there's a heavy front-end cost of utilities and pump station has to go in. So the only real changes that I may have not seen since last time you brought us to earth is that previously we had utilities for storm ran through the trunk line, ran through the center of the site. That caused it to be pretty deep, which had a pretty high cost, and so we actually converted that where the center of our side is running from south. It's actually a high point, sheds off on the sides more naturally. So, we sent a drainage report to Kyle Redden Ridge, who is a reviewing entity for the city, as well as the pump stations, Santa Ex sewer sheets, we're gonna review as well, just having that in common, so that we'll address those as we work through the city's hat ons.
So you send Kyle as the one that's gonna review the, the, the pump stations and the drainage?
Yes, yes ma'am, she, or he, uh, he's the, I believe the standard reviewing entity for all pump station wastewater. And then the mayor, based on our last kind of staff level meeting with the mayor, he decided to get that reviewed drainage as well, so it's being sent by him. It will also be reviewed by, I believe his name is Jimmy, what was his last name, the street guy?
Johnson.
Jimmy Johnson. Uh, he, you know, so both of them have eyes, and I believe Jimmy's actually sits and comments to Kyle, or maybe we just haven't received those yet, but like I said, uh, we don't perceive any large concerns. I ran or forwarded it angles to required storm events without any issue at all. So the, the shed off is in the same locations that it is in existing conditions, and, uh, you know, the total spread of runoff will be decreased as part of the.
Um, I'm not nearly as versed in this stuff as you are. Uh, so this is probably, this might be a stupid question, but, uh, what level of storm did you test?
So, I actually tested twenty-five, just to make sure that we bump it up and then get run the ball. Um, and so they'll handle through all that. At twenty-five and up, they have some, some minor street bonding, which is allowed by the Mayflower code. Um, the Mayflower code requires it to convey tenure storm. So it can base that without any street bonding or anything like that. Whereas twenty-five and up, major larger storm event, you may have ten minutes of a little bit of, of a lobe on the street, but it doesn't exceed that current minimum flow anyway, so we'll check that.
Well, I figured there was a standard, I just want to make sure that I'm right to here. What questions do we have, like you mentioned, or Chris has asked to tell? There's no home styles on this, right? This is just, this is just.
This is just the design blueprint, so, uh, we don't have that. We can probably get the VR and get them to send that, if y'all, if I can see how shared over with. Um, I can, might inquire about that and find out what I'm being.
Yeah, you can always come back and just look at the house design and make sure that you make sure there's that can be a separate.
Yeah, though, I mean, though, y'all should be pretty familiar with the thing you're having right across the ridge. They'll follow that same design and everything, you know, it'll be all masterly, all precise, and the setbacks are actually here. So, uh, we, we can plot all those aspects, we just don't have, you know, their models on hand, they don't, they just don't provide us typically, so.
So these would be great.
Yes, ma'am.
What about the roofs?
All architectural shingles, um, you know, if you don't have their, their models with their typical standard, you know, day roof versus mall, so.
I just wanted to just in one year three tag.
No, I suppose.
Well, you said.
I didn't know what you were saying. You had your architectural. Good deal, all right.
Not a, uh, real serious, go ahead, just pronounce it, man, you. Equilum?
It's Montaquia, uh.
Montaquia, that's like.
It's actually my dog's name.
Did you know that?
It's, it's, it's.
Butter in Spanish.
It is.
It's what?
Butter in Spanish. It's a, it's my dog's name, but I didn't have a street name for there, and my wife was like, you should stick his name in, so. It was a butterball.
I mean, that, that works.
Pulling out my, uh, ears of Spanish, I still.
Who's the, gonna be building contract?
It will be the R one.
It will be the R one.
Yeah, we were talking about that, and I said, well, you know, D R Horton was doing all of those in the video, so.
And mostly if you see, you'd be pretty impressed with the product they brought here so far compared to the, you know, builders that you may have seen in the past. Uh, we, we, you know, are glad that they're here, they've been putting a good product out, and they're kind of changing the name of these large area builders, so. I'm glad to see that they're, they're coming out here and, you know, showing a lot of interest in some of our talk.
From what I've seen, they, they, they work fast, too.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
I live right next to that big field.
Within a month.
Oh, really?
So I just, I watch that every day.
It's kind of crazy.
Yeah, I mean, where, where cross-street curbs, my house, I have that acre there. And so, yeah, I've been watching them come up, and it's kind of funny, you sit there, you're like, what are they gonna do anything? And now it's like, damn.
We just got, we just got ten more curb.
A month, I can see them, it was like every day, you're up on the street. It's all around the corner, right, 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 the school. And you, every day, yeah, yeah, and, and they're just in progression. They, they're up, they have roofs, this will start, and me.
The symbol line.
Yeah, exactly, it's like roofs are moved twice, I mean, they just jump to the next roof.
The workers are moving down the houses, just like in the subway line, it is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they have a system down, yeah, if I can pull it off, they're just gonna have it lined out.
Same work process.
Yeah, you know what you're doing.
You don't get, you don't know where you're going in the house. They look nice.
Um, are there any other questions or concerns, um, about this plan?
This, I think I've done this the last time, very impressive.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, just ask.
Yeah, just see if he has any questions, of course.
Yeah, seeing them bathing, uh, I'm sure you have, we've talked about this before, but these will be done in phases, uh. At least our highest phase is about forty-four lots, the lowest will be thirty of them brought in on the basic one. Uh, and then the pump station was largely very limited, because we have to connect the sewer of water up there off of a Luther Lane. And so all that will be brought in from the front end with the first phase, but we'll just, you know, tag along the sewer that will be encapped and then continue on rapid lives as it, as it builds up.
Chris, do you have any questions or concerns about these plans?
No, uh, so I've just kind of been a preliminary, obviously, we had a set that really hasn't changed much, uh, as far as city ordinances and stuff go. Uh, haven't gone page to page on the new set yet, it's been pretty busy the past couple of weeks.
Sure.
Uh, but I don't think much has changed, I think it was more to the drainage side. Jimmy Joe had some questions, and he has already kind of filled up those. I asked Jimmy Joe today if he felt it was necessary to be here tonight to voice those concerns. Said that I, I, it ain't worth his time, they're, they're minuscule concerns, that's always a range that he has.
Excellent.
Uh, so he, he's already in, kind of working behind the scenes, uh, with his concerns. And Raymond, I believe, was wanting kind of a larger set of plans, uh, to view versus some of the smaller, so I don't know if he had a chance.
He hasn't, but I'm certainly happy to drop that off.
Uh, and I, so Raymond will be the only wild card, but I, I think in, in principle, we've all kind of gone around and said, this, this is something we're gonna, you know, uh, not pose essentially as department heads. So I've heard no, no negative comments about what's being proposed.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? We're going to, uh, change things up a little bit, uh, the mayor is out, uh, and several of our group is going to use Barbara, the mayor has asked Barbara to step in, uh, to his role, uh, which she has done for mayor in the past, uh, so she's going to step into his role and take over the chair, uh, position, so that I can vote with the other commissioners on this plan.
Okay.
Ms. Chair.
Thank you.
Uh, Chair Walker.
There you, there you go. Okay, no other questions, correct? Show us. Do I have a motion to accept the preliminary, uh, is this gonna be, is this a preliminary site plan? We call it preliminary, or?
Yes, yeah.
Still kind of preliminary.
Is this the, sorry, I didn't hear. Is this preliminary plan allows us to?
Take out a first, start the excavation work, and as any of the department heads have any additional issues, we're subject to revision of those concerns that, uh, I don't think will be any, but this will allow them to proceed with the dirtwork and get started.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, you don't want to shovel on the dirt and have first show.
Always, it's, it's a funding matter, too, we can't get funding from the bank until again, until we can get up for plans, so that's the big concern.
So if there's gonna be preliminary plan approval, then will allow them to begin?
Construction, yeah.
Allow them to take the excavation permit out, start the dirtwork, while the rest of the department heads continue their review. And theoretically, we'll be back for the next meeting on July eighth. If we have any comments and need to be addressed at that point, we can, if there are any.
And then, I'm sure if anything comes up, you'll be working with these guys behind the scenes anyway, so any issues that come up will probably be resolved by the time we meet any time, so.
Okay, let me see if I got this wrong. Preliminary plan approval, then will allow excavation permits and other department heads to review. That's what we're giving.
Yeah, we're, we're, that's essentially it. They're ready to get started, and we don't have any serious objections, so.
I'll make a motion to accept these preliminary plans, uh, to allow the Denver to, to start their construction over. Second.
I have a motion against the second. Randy Hellman?
Yeah. Yes, you go, yes.
Yeah. James Snyder?
Yes.
Ken Patterson?
Yes.
Ken Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Get them shovel, there you go. They won't, they won't take long, but.
That is a motion perfectly, you can do a long, you can come see this more, challenge to get here.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Yeah.
So our care is not here about the signage?
Yeah.
So I, I did receive communication, uh, from the superintendent requesting a follow-up on that, uh, since they, it wasn't included in their original site plan. We talked about our care, uh, moving to their new location. Uh, I went back and told them this actually should have been included in their original site plan, and discussed and vetted at that point. Uh, they're coming back after, back to, uh, Mr. Snyder, I think I sent you kind of, uh, preliminary concerns, and I forwarded those same concerns on, uh, to the superintendent. Uh, they're, they propose a building sign that the way our ordinances are written, it has to be no greater than twenty percent of the front facade of that building. I'm not gonna get out there and measure it, uh, it's just something that they need to be cognizant of. I'm not going to get out there and measure it, I, it's just something that they need to be cognizant of, the way it's designed or signed accordingly, so I don't, I don't object to the building sign, I don't object to the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, post sign that's going to be in front of the building, as long as it's within the setback requirements of the property. Uh, the third sign that they proposed was a quarter sign at the intersection of Miller and Sandy Road, that was off their property on City Rights Way, insofar as I can tell, but regardless, it was an off-site sign, which are not allowed, where you, we can't, we can't advertise to your businesses on property that you don't own. So I recommended we deny that, uh, the city ordinances do allow me to administratively approve these, since it wasn't a significant deviation from their original site plan, uh, and I put that forth to, uh, the superintendent that I, we can do option A, option B, can't do option C. If you wish to dispute that, then you have to return to the planning mission, file an appeal, and go through that process, so I've not heard that.
Okay, well, um, I have full faith and confidence in your abilities and your judgment, so the, the code provides for you to make that administrative decision, so I am, I have the chairman of this commission a hundred percent behind you. If you believe that it is, that they've met everything that this has been done, so be, you have the, the, uh, the best wishes to this community in mind, and all, everything you do, so.
I, I understand that, that they were just trying to, it was an apt response, essentially.
I'm just glad we got away from the blaming L and D.
Yes, well, they've got the two metal signs over here on, on, which, well, here at the intersection of three sixty-five, that pointing towards their own location, so that is a conversation I got to swing by there more, and take them, take their whole directional signs now, uh, they probably had forgotten they're there.
Yeah.
Which those shouldn't have been approved anyway, but they're there.
Yeah. Small town. Okay, excellent, um, so our next, uh, our next meeting is, uh, the planning commission meeting July eighth, um, I'm going to try and plan your schedule, in fact, we just did over here, another workshop, so that we can continue working on our U N O. Um, easier than trying to get everyone. Are folks available one week from today, on the seventeenth? Yes, six thirty.
Yes.
Ted?
Oh, I think so.
You just said the seventeenth.
Yeah.
It'd be a very long day, I admit.
We'll bring you snacks. Yeah, today, I think I had twelve meetings at work, and tomorrow I have fifteen, so I do that, and then I come and do this, and, yeah, it makes for a long day, and then being nauseous most of the days and have cancer, that makes it really long.
Yes.
So, yeah. Long days. Uh, all right, let me put that microphone, so we will have a planning commission meeting, uh, workshop, I'm sorry, not being a workshop, on Tuesday, June seventeenth at six thirty, right here, uh, we'll get that online as well, so folks know. Um, obviously, open to anybody who wants to come, participate, we'd love to have. Um, and the city council meeting is in two weeks, I'll let you know.
June seventeen?
Yes, June seventeen, in one week.
It's, it's six thirty?
Yes.
Okay.
Well.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to start meeting back ten more weeks.
Good, and bring your friends. I know, I, bring your friend, bring your family, like I said, bring your enemies, I don't care, bring them all, the more people who participate, the better the time is gonna be for.
Right.
So, the more voices we hear, the better.
That's what I'm, was when I was going around the neighborhood, I need to hear.
Yeah, because if we don't, you know, like, we've had several rezoning requests, where we received zero opposition.
It was zero opposition since I've been in my position.
Exactly, they, they were easy decisions, it's like, okay, no one, no one cares, sure, but this is the first time, and like, ringing, I'm talking, it's like, you ever seen opposition like this, we can't make a decision to approve this tonight, we, we can't do that.
So none of y'all were around when we brought this to the.
I didn't even live in a state twelve years ago. I've lived in Mayflower for about eight years. Yeah, Barbara founded Mayflower, so she knows all the things?
Forty-three years this month.
Well.
There you go.
I was trying to figure out, I think I'm, I think I've begun that one about forty. I've worked with the, yeah, I've worked with the city forty-three years this forty-four.
So she started working for the city when I was six.
You were?
She started working for the city when I was six. Exactly.
It's a big, it was a big, it was a big ordeal.
It sure sounds like it, this is the first I've heard of her.
All of our community was twenty years younger.
Sure.
So now, you know, now I'm like, okay, we're twenty years older, we're retired, we're any kind, we're, you know, disabled, we have, we're aging. I don't know if I can get everybody, which, there were several that it's like, I don't think I'm gonna be able to manage it, and I'm like, if you just need a ride, I would think we can do it.
Sure.
I'll do what I can, so.
Yeah, no, we, we appreciate that.
I would be more willing to actually assign a position. I don't know if that would work, that would better.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, I mean, bring people, you know, and my, my only two requests are that people come with microphones to have those conversations, because it's just, it's, it's hard to hear, you know, it's like. Yeah, it's just, I've got a permit in two, in one year, so I'm always like this anyway, you know, I've had it since I was eighteen, so I'm always like, trying to hear what someone's talking, and then a piece of chandrum in the background, I can't hear what's happening, so I couldn't make a decision or comment or rebuttal or anything, so I can't even hear what they're saying.
Well, and the only one that I was really concerned about was Tony, I, I was just, he kind of, it's a hot head, and he gets, you know, things are really hitting him in the heart, he really gets.
That's okay, you're.
He's passionate about.
He's passionate, that's. I mean, passions, passion's cool, I, I knew passion, you know, if you get, if you cross, if you cross the line, I can deal with that, too. I don't have any problem de-escalating somebody.
I was just playing, I was saying, get the.
Oh, I.
She's got my bad one.
And then I just say, I just say, you know, I'm like, first hand of your business.
And I don't want to do that.
Yeah, nobody wants to do that. But passion is totally cool, as long as people, you know, as long as they're not personally attacking someone.
Right.
Maybe, you know, at, at one point, a gentleman, he, he took two steps towards Mr. Webb, and Mr. Webb was stepping back to allow him the space, but then he kept approaching, that's when I said, hey, you're in Mr. Webb's personal space.
Right.
We, we need to back up here, because I, you know, I'm good at reading body language.
Right.
And Mr. Webb is not comfortable with.
With him.
Being that person, and, and, and this level of passion, you know, you just kind of, you, you tend to be defensive and back up a little bit, in a way, so we don't have a, want that kind of environment or feeling within the meetings, we want, we want to discuss ideas and concepts, and not discuss individuals, you know, so.
That's why I thought back to let her know, I was not attacking your, your character, I was doing what anyone would normally do, and there were several people that had followed to me, which made me go to Google and do my own research.
It's also, and you did bring up a good point, it's, it's good to remember, too, that you would be hard pressed to find any business or business person who's been in business for twenty years that hasn't had a problem. I mean, look at our city, how many times has this city had legal issues, and, and we're a damn city, you know, so I mean, you know, I worked for, I worked for a very large company, and it has, it's had issues, you know, any, do any business that's been running for twenty years, that had complaints, they've had fines.
All of them, certainly, I had, was the fact that he didn't have business licenses, and I'm like, why would you not have a business license?
I, I don't, I don't know, he could have an LLC, and then he hires, he, he wouldn't need a business license, he had an LLC, and then hire a, a contractor who has all the licenses, like, if, like, if I wanted to start, like, a lot of, like, like, the, the Verbo folks who are buying houses and things. They, they might just have the LLC, and they're just buying houses to do Verbo and Airbnb, I have a Airbnb right across the street from me. There's construction crews in there all the time, in the ground, they haven't, they haven't caused any problems, there's no trash, there's no parking problems, they're not loud, they're friendly. You go.
I'm waiting for a motion to adjourn.
All of Sanders, say hi.
I don't know who did that, but who did what, we know the last time.
It don't matter.
It stays up, be fine, come on.
I kept looking at it, you know. All of y'all were being patient with.
Absolutely.
All of us leaving to the meeting.
It's part of the problem.
And that's what I'm, you know, I go.